All right, let's go ahead and call it a order. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from the October board meeting.
This is Jared, I move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. All right, next up, we have our support group updates. So it looks like we will start with the PTO, is that Ms. Burton on the line?
Yes. I'm here, can you hear me?
We're good, Ms. Burton.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you guys so much for your grace and your patience with the PTO as we re-engage with our PTO board and then also the families within our LNC community. I will try to maybe as concise as possible with our presentation today, but I want to get you guys kind of up to speed on everything that is happening within the PTO across the elementary school, middle and high school campuses. Normally, I have a list of activities that are currently going on, but what we actually did in our recent PTO meeting is really just to get the foundation and talk about where we are, where we've been, and how to steward appropriately the funds that we are currently collecting for our budget. I do have a couple of announcements to make. One of the first things that I'm really excited to share with the board today is that the PTO will be looking at funding our staff funding request in the month of November. This is something that we normally handle toward the end of the year, allowing teachers to be ready to prepare for the August academic year. But because we've been in such a unique place in a unique state, we are going to actually have this month be one of the months that we're going to have our teachers go through the staff funding request. Each one of the PTO presidents at their respective campuses will be meeting with the principals. We will prioritize that list and make sure that we get some additional staff funding. So we're asking for our staff to just look at the current needs, don't try to kind of backtrack and think about, you know, what we missed. Look at the current needs of our students and how we can impact that student experience from here through the rest of the year. One of the other things that we discussed that will be another exciting thing, upcoming events. On November the 19th, we will have our LNC Thanksgiving luncheon that will take place across all campuses. The luncheon will be catered by waiter's choice. We are still trying to be very sensitive to our current situation, so we wanted to make sure that we had these luncheons catered until we get to a point where we can go back and start asking our families and our parents for donations and contributions. So that our staff is very comfortable with, you know, the way things are, we want to make sure that we do this. So most of our lunches probably throughout the rest of the year will be catered. Another exciting event that we are happy to institute again is our gift of the season. And for many of the parents, maybe that may not know about this, this is actually something that we do every year for our staff members, where we basically take from the parents, they don't have to worry about going out shopping for each one of their teachers. We actually open up a PayPal button, allow for those gifts to come in monetarily through that PayPal button, and then those monies are divided amongst all three campuses. And then we provide gift cards and other little trinkets to each one of the staff members. So there's more to come on that, but it was just a great thing to know that we are getting back to normal and that we will be once again spoiling our LNC staff. As I continue, I wanted to talk just quickly about PTO finances. I know a number of you are interested in that, and I'll make this as quick as possible. Our PTO finances come from three different areas, our lunch program, supply kits, agendas, and spiritware. From July through October, we had $41,000 year to date in that four-month time period. So that would be like our net income from July through October. Currently, we have about $163,000 in the bank, and I know people are like, oh my God, that's a lot of money. But yearly, we have expenditures that come out, and we are trying to make sure that we can cover that baseline. Yearly, we're looking at about $105,000 that is paid out to LNC in a myriad of different ways, and we carry over about $80,000 per year. So what we are trying to do now, this is going to be a year for us that we are really trying to establish a baseline and move forward, because really, ever since we began with the elementary school, we have been in a mode of transition. Each year has been either we've added more days to the lunch program, the elementary school has more staff, the middle school, high school. So this really is going to be our baseline year, and then hopefully from here forward, we will be able to kind of have some true historical data without all of the transitions. And, you know, we won't even talk about the transition that we had to deal with with COVID. But we just wanted everyone to know that we are really looking at, you know, our expenditures and the best thing to do for our staff members, and that is one of the reasons why we decided to move forward with the staff, the staff funding requests. So please, again, make sure that we have all of those, we're gonna start that immediately and have a cutoff date on that as of November the 31st. One other thing regarding our lunch program, we are currently at about 43% participation campus-wide. That is one thing that our parents can continue to increase, it will definitely help our funding and all of the events that we currently have going on. Our average amount for the lunch program that we are bringing in per week is between $4,500 and $5,000, but that's about $4,200 coming into our bottom line for profit. So we definitely need to get that number up. We are much better than we have been historically because of the pandemic and just the craziness of our schedules. But that is our only fundraiser at LNC, and that is how the PTO functions. So we want to make sure that we continue to see an increase in that number. Relating to the lunch program, we need to make sure that one of their major priorities is volunteerism, and really at the high school level. So we are going to look at incentivizing clubs to volunteer to resolve that problem within the high school setting. The elementary school seems to be doing great, middle school is also holding their own, we just need additional help over at the high school. And to get that additional help, we are going to be looking for those clubs to get involved, band drama, and maybe the senior council. And we have one action item that we are going to be working on regarding the PTO, and that action item is to make sure that we have some consistent leadership moving forward. We're in the process of adding and integrating many of our new families into our current board, updating our website, and trying to align with the leadership regarding re-engaging not only our PTO board members, but re-engaging with our families. I apologize for the long report, but it's been a moment since we have been in this space, so I wanted to make sure that we were very thorough.
First of all, Nicole, this is Shannon, I just wanted to say thank you very much for all the work that you guys did. It sounds like you had a lot of things on the plate, and I know it'll be really exciting for our staff to hear about some of the great things that you guys have planned, including the grant request, so thank you for that. And also just want to give a shout out to our parents, because we were just talking about this today, about how any other school, you're getting jump rope-a-thons, PTO-a-thons, you know, chocolate wrapping paper-a-thons, and we really try hard at LNC not to do that, and PTO is a joint effort in that. And so you guys work very hard to not put that burden on families, but instead ask for involvement and just recognizing how much our lunch program means. So I just feel like it's important for us to remember that, because if you've only been at LNC, you probably don't realize all the different things that you're missing out on if you were at a regular school. So thanks again, Nicole.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Nicole, thanks again, appreciate the thoroughness, and anytime you come bearing great news like that, please take all the time you want in these meetings.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to our next agenda item, the athletic boosters. Mr. Schlegel.
Yeah, good evening. Doug is not here tonight, Doug's actually gonna present in the December meeting, and he's gonna talk about our finances from the fall, which would be the golf outing concessions and admission from the fall sports, so you guys can look forward to that in December. For now, I want to just talk a little bit about how well we did as a sport program, now that the fall season's wrapped up, or about to wrap up. As you all know, we got elevated and moved to a 3A school this past year with the realignment, so this is our first year in 3A, we've been 2A, and we were 1A before that. So we keep climbing the ladder, a lot of that's to do with how successful we are. And hopefully, after I'm done here, you guys will see how that continues on. So I'm gonna talk briefly about our high school sports, where we're at, how we ended, and then that'll be about it. So women's golf, we're conference champs, so they were 3A conference champs. We went to the state championship. We had tests in Georgia finish 11th and 20th in Pinehurst, which is amazing for those ladies to finish so high in the 3A level. Our women's tennis finished up last night, we're conference champs, we were 19-1. We lost last night, was our first loss, unfortunately, it was in their regional final, so we made it to the final four in the state for tennis. Amazing, I can't give them enough props to go 19-0 and lose a very, very close match five to four, or four to five last night to Forest View. Cross country was conference champs, as well as they came in first for the boys and the girls at regional, they will be running at the state championship this Saturday in Kernersville. Volleyball came second in conference, they finished 17-4 and lost a very tough match in the first round of playoffs. Men's soccer came in second in conference, they lost a very tough match Monday night in the first round of playoffs. And our varsity football team finished 5-4, that was the first winning season we've had for varsity football since 2012. And I want to give a shout out to Coach Bob McKay, he was named 2021 Charlotte Touchdown Club Coach of the Year. That is a really big deal. Coach McKay will be representing Lake Norman Charter and himself and the team at a very big banquet uptown Charlotte, December 6th, it's a black tie event. It's gonna have some big keynote speakers there, I believe seats are around $400, $600 to even attend, it's a pretty big event. And out of 100 different schools that could have gotten that opportunity, Coach McKay was elected Coach of the Year. So extremely excited for him and the program, they've come a long way. I'm very excited for the decision that we made collectively to go independent and be able to play schools locally, more our size, and allow our kids the opportunity to have a great season. Winter sports kicked off last week with middle school basketball, they had tryouts Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week, their first games are coming up this upcoming Monday. And high school basketball started Monday, they have made their cuts, and they're gonna have a scrimmage, I believe the boys scrimmage already this Saturday, the girls scrimmage next Saturday. And swim unfortunately had to push back their start date from Tuesday to this upcoming Tuesday, so they'll start this upcoming Tuesday. And then finally, for those that don't know, the big Royal Golf Outing put on by our Athletic Boosters is this Sunday at Northstone Country Club, shotgun start 11:30, we sold out of that event, we actually have a waiting list, which is amazing, we have great sponsors, great giveaways, so I'm looking forward to seeing everyone out for that, and we're excited to raise some money for the Athletic Booster Club.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schlegel, great season in the fall, look forward to winter sports, and I will see you out there on Sunday. I might resemble a golf game, we'll see.
It's a scramble.
Yes. All right, so next up, we'll shift gears and move over to finance, and Ms. Wilson, I assume you're gonna talk about the budget amendment?
All righty. So the first thing we're gonna present tonight are the first quarter financial update. So the first slide shows a budget to actual through September 30th of 2021. We're trending kind of as usual, you will see that right now we're operating at a net deficit of about $450,000. That's purely due to the timing of the local student revenue. So when we invoice each county, there has to be a verification, and with 2,209 students, that verification can take quite a while for them to verify every address. So that is why there's always a delay in that first payment. I will say that all counties have now made themselves current, so you guys will see that disappear second quarter. The next slide is just to kind of give you guys a comparison of prior year to current year. Honestly, the variances here are mostly attributed to either timing of payments and then COVID-related activities. As you all know, the 2020-2021 school year was crazy, think about where we were this time last year. So that's pretty much what accounts for all of these variances. Some of the other things are the Elevate campaign, we were in the midst of doing that capital project, so you'll see that capital purchases have gone down quite drastically. And then on the local revenue side, we are seeing a slowdown of the Elevate campaign because people are completing their pledges, right? So that is attributing to that decrease in local revenue. And then finally, I'll just point out, last year we did not run our after-school nights kids program at the elementary school. So you're seeing that revenue back because we are operating that program in the 21-22 school year. So finally, this is the budget amendment, the finance committee is bringing to you guys tonight to vote. Just a few things on the revenue side, we did receive the SRO grant for the year number two, so even though there's no state budget, they have gone ahead and funded that. We have adjusted the local county revenue now that we know what our actual per pupil rates are. I will say that CMS was a 3% increase over last year, so that was promising. We've also had some slight adjustments for sponsorship revenue, and then there was some rollover from the federal COVID funding that we needed to move into this fiscal year. On the expense side, we are asking you guys to give us permission to institute a substitute bonus program. What this would look like is a $500 bonus per semester for our long-term sub, so a sub that picks up a long-term job, which is 20 days or more, and then a $250 per semester bonus for any sub that picks up 10 jobs within the semester. I'm sure all of you have been in tune as to what's going on in substitute land, and even though Lake Norman Charter isn't feeling it probably as drastically as our peer LEA, we are seeing it, and we feel like this will be a great retention and recruitment tool while we kind of navigate through this new world that we're all living in. So you'll see there, the cost is about $16,200, so $15,000 allotted for the bonuses and obviously the applicable taxes. The other changes on the expense side, again, we rolled over the federal COVID funding, so that's offset by the revenue up top. We have also invested in some staff development, the global diversity, so we've engaged with Nixon and Company, and then we're also doing a financial wellness PD this year through Catalyst Academy. So you will see that we have in addition to our staff development strategic initiatives line, we needed to make some upgrades to our lottery software, and we did some slight tweaks to our copier, and then there was also an increase in the traffic officer daily rate given to us by the town of Huntsville. So when you take all of that into consideration, we're actually adding right now $80,000 to the surplus that we have, so hopefully with your approval, we can get this done. Any questions?
Apparently, there's no questions. All right, do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
A motion that we approved the budget amendment as presented. This is Amy, I'll second that.
Thank you, ladies. Any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Let's see. Was there a deeper dive on the substitute incentive, or was that?
No, it was just part of the budget amendment, and Haley explained it, yep.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Yeah.
She's that efficient, all right. So next up, we have the school and state reports, so Ms. Stein?
Yep, it will be me and Mr. Funchess will be sharing a little bit as well. So if you guys remember, last month, I had the honor of sharing that both our elementary school and our middle school were named the number-two charter school in the Charlotte region, top 1% in the state, which was super exciting. And we just got, right after that board meeting was done, we received information that great schools announced that LNC was acknowledged as a 2021 College Success Award winner. And what College Success Award is, is it recognizes high schools that are excelling and preparing students for enrolling and succeeding in college. So that was another wonderful accolade, so it was kind of cool, we kind of ran the whole, ran the board. So tomorrow, we're gonna be recognizing our teachers with a little treat in the morning, which is just a very small recognition for all the amazing things they do day in and day out. So congratulations to Mr. Smith and to Mr. Funchess and the whole LNC high school staff for their accomplishment, so congratulations, guys. I wanted to give a specific shout out to our counseling department, and specifically Dr. Danielle Graham. For those of you who may not remember Dr. Danielle Graham, we are partnering with Novant Health, she is a certified mental health practitioner, and, you know, this was a new position, we weren't exactly sure, you know, where she'll plug in and how much she'll service and what the need was, and it's been amazing. For the first quarter, she has had a great deal of contact with lots of our students, given resources to our teachers, offered a stress and anxiety workshop for our teachers, at least at the high school, I think we're looking to do that in our other buildings, and she did an online workshop for our parents on stress and coping, or sorry, she did a pandemic stress with teens workshop to give strategies to parents, and now they're going to be doing two different workshops with our students at the high school level, stress and coping, and test anxiety. And depending on how those go, there could be some ongoing group work with some of those students if they need a little bit deeper dive. So lots of great things going on there. Ms. Christine Casillas, who's one of our counselors, has written the LNC's mental health plan and works very collaboratively with Dr. Graham, and I've been very impressed with the programming and support that they've done so far this year. So in the wake of the pandemic, that's been great. On November 1st, which was four days ago, our LNC lottery opened up for the 2022-2023 school year, and that, what we always do is we open November 1st, we always close on January 31st, we always hold our lottery on the Thursday closest to Valentine's Day, hoping to share some love with some folks. And I am happy to report a couple of things. First of all, this year, Kim Ribbons, who is one of our technology coordinators who's been here, oh goodness, I think 17 years and is retiring this year, which is gonna be a huge hole, in my right line, not the hole, but 17 years, I think both of those things are true. It is her brother who's helped us with some of the behind-the-scenes coding, and they've really attacked, how do we, in this, you know, world where there are all kinds of hacking and people trying to do nefarious things, how do we make sure that our process stays one that's going to have the security that necessary? So they have just recently put in three different levels of security measures so that bots can't fill out our application, that there's a certain number per IP address within a certain amount of time, they've added a ghost field for all you techie people, you're probably techin' out, but they've added all these great layers, so it will make sure that we are ensuring that our process goes smoothly. With that being said, I'm happy to report we've had a very strong start. Last year in Week 1, so after seven days, last year we had 1,200 applications, this year after four days, we've had 1,405 applications. So we're up just a little bit, and we'll see how that continues to track, but hopefully that is a reflection of all the good work that people saw through the pandemic. So we'll see, and I'll continue to report out. And then lastly, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Funchess. Mr. Funchess did an initiative, I think it was a couple of years ago he started, and he can talk about that more, but he expanded the opportunity to the middle school this year, where he partnered with our parents to give our students an opportunity to connect with people in different career fields, and he was very purposeful around that. So, Mr. Funchess, you want to talk a little bit about the program, the speakers, and some of the different things that our students had the ability to hear about?
Thank you. Yeah, so this is a program I started five years ago, I just, yeah, five years ago. This is the first year I've opened up to parents, so I want to publicly thank all the parents that signed up this year, I did that at our coffee chat, but also have some middle school parents, I want to make sure that they get the public thank you as well. So the point of the series is to provide our students with opportunities or possibilities of what they can do with their degrees. In the field of education, we can tell kids, hey, go to college and get this particular degree, but at that point, that may end our guidance. So my thought was to bring in professionals that have degrees and say, this is what they can do with their particular degree. For example, if you get a business degree, what can you do with that? Well, I can do X, Y, and Z, but you may have chosen to do X, but you have these other opportunities, so the main goal is to show students the opportunities they can have with higher education. So this year was the biggest outpour of the series, we had over 50 professionals volunteer their time, and I had over 90 requests from students and teachers for their speakers to come into the classroom or via Zoom. Well, everything was via Zoom, but as far as either per class or per individual student. So it was a very successful series, it's something I've done, I do in the fall and the spring, so I'm hoping that the spring will be just as fruitful for the students in that they take advantage of the opportunity. The only fields that didn't have this, this particular series, was music field, I don't have anybody in that field, and dentists. Other than that, I had engineers, doctors, veterinarians, finance, education, fine arts, so it was just, it was just a variety of different fields for the students to hear about. So those students that have no idea what they want to do, it's a perfect opportunity for them to listen and ask questions of professionals to see if they're interested in what they're doing. Or if a student does have an idea of what they want to do, to narrow down or ask questions if that's the particular field they truly want to go into. But once again, the whole goal of this is to provide them with opportunities or possibilities of what they can do with their education.
Thank you, Mr. Funchess. Appreciate that, it was really cool to hear, some of our students really took advantage of meeting with different folks and appreciated all our teachers' efforts to bring them in. So it was a great partnership and appreciate his initiative in bringing that, so appreciate that, Mr. Funchess.
Yeah, I'll just pile on to that, you know, to
Yeah, I'll just pile on to that. Um, you know, to me, I think it, uh, just makes a ton of sense to get people who are in those fields to come in and talk and day in the life and all that. And that, that's what makes it tangible to those kids. So great idea. Love the, uh, um, the continuation of it. So, um, awesome job. Thank you. All right. Next up, we'll move over into our committee report. So, um, first up, we have the investment committee.
Mr. Jared? Yeah, I'll represent the investment committee. So we, we met a couple of weeks ago with Jamie Parker with PNC Investment, um, Management, uh, Institutional Asset Management. And, uh, he took us through kind of the first quarter of our, um, uh, investment results, kind of did a little bit of a deep dive with us. That statement, that portfolio review, uh, is very lengthy. It's got a lot of macroeconomic, you know, information, what's happening in capital markets as well as kind of our own, you know, internal performance. So if you're interested in that stuff, I've posted out there in the SharePoint site. So if you, you know, want to go out there and take a look. Um, they use that really as the basis for this, uh, update, which is really, really high level. Um, we don't have time to get on the details, but just want to let you know that, you know, detailed information is out there if you're interested. So, uh, as you, just to kind of back up a little bit, we, we funded our two million dollar investment account. Uh, we initially had, had targeted in June, we decided to hold, hold off until July to kind of, um, align with a true quarter, you know, that July, August, September timeframe. That also allows us to do some comparisons to some of the benchmarks that are out there in terms of the different asset classes and the investments we had. So just so you know, we helped, you know, we deferred a little while there in terms of funding that account, but now have a kind of a full quarter view to review. Um, in terms of the Q three results, um, unfortunately, the market value, uh, declined some. Uh, overall for the quarter, we were down about point four two percent. Uh, as you can see, um, September was a terrible month. Uh, at least in terms of our investments and how we were invested. Um, so the market value coming out of the end of September was about one point nine eight eight million dollars. Uh, the drivers of that, uh, again, don't want anybody to panic here. It's just a snapshot in time, but in terms of the drivers are equity, um, asset classes were down just, you know, really just shy of one percent. And you could see what September did for the quarter. We're down four point six eight percent. Most of that decline was in international and the small cap investments that we have, small cap funds. Um, although we actually, uh, performed better than some of the benchmarks in terms of Vanguard and, and a couple of others. So it could have been, you know, really much worse. Um, the fixed income side overall just kind of flat. Um, but September was, was rough as well, down, um, point five three percent, fifty-three basis points there. Um, and most of that was because of some volatility and some changes to the interest rates and some people moving out of those funds and, and getting into some others. So, uh, took, took it on the chin a little bit in, in September. I think going into the end of August, we were looking pretty good, but, uh, things were just really volatile in September. We continue to take this dollar cost averaging approach to our equity, um, asset class. So you'll remember, we are trying to get to an allocation target of about forty percent. Um, you know, with tranches of one sixth per month over a six-month period. So through the end of September, we're about halfway there. So we're about nineteen percent allocated to equities, which is kind of good because it gives us an opportunity to, to, uh, do some opportunistic buying, uh, coming out of that dip in September. So that, a little bit of a silver lining there. And then, you know, just so that folks aren't panicking, uh, we pulled the October, um, year-to-date view, market value is back up over two million, two, two million nine seven, seven zero five. We're allocated about twenty-seven percent, uh, equity and have about two more tranches to go to get us to our kind of forty percent target. Let me pause there. Um, a lot to unpack, but, uh, any questions?
I have a question and, and this is just my naivete, but maybe, um, Jamie at PNC has, has talked about this. It, it looks like inflation is going to be something that's going to be very near on the horizon. Just, um, is there any speculation um, of how that could potentially affect the, what we have currently invested?
Yeah, we, I mean, we talked a little bit about inflation. It's kind of, it's really kind of hard to predict, but I mean, a couple of things were that a lot of the blue chip companies weren't necessarily seeing, you know, coming out with guidance that, that, that looked unfavorably around supply chain issues yet. That may be coming, but equities were really kind of strong here recently and continuing to be strong. Uh, but that may play out down the road. I think one of the bigger concerns is around the interest rates, what's going to happen there too. So, um, as that happens, I mean, we're, we're, we have a very conservative approach in terms of our portfolio. So if we have sixty to seventy percent in fixed income and interest rates go up, there's going to be some, some movement there. It could be some risk. And so, um, but at the same time, we, we have this kind of this dollar cost averaging of our equity. So we've got some buying opportunities there. So uh, it's kind of hard to say. I mean, Jamie could probably give you a lot more information on that, but it does, that, that report will speak to some of that if you, if you would. Hopefully that helps a little.
Yeah.
Any other? Okay, um. Next page is really just a visual, just what we just discussed. So top right is the quarter view. You can see kind of overall how we did. Um, total portfolio growth net. And then the blue is kind of the, the policy benchmark that we have. And then to the, to the left, upper left is the, the September result. So again, major declines in September. Um, but you know, it's, the overall for the quarter, we were down, but not quite as bad since, uh, July and August performed fairly well. It's just a view of our allocation. So, um, you know, equity is right around nineteen percent. Fixed income is at seventy-seven, almost seventy-eight. Again, that will continue to shift. That mix will continue to shift as we continue to, uh, dollar cost average over the next couple of months. I think as of the end of October, we were about twenty-seven percent equity allocation. Uh, I did pull just the end of October, kind of where we sat. So that's the, the two million nine seven oh four. So we continue to be on the, uh, on the, the, uh, upward trajectory there. And then as of yesterday's close of market, I think we're at two million seventeen thousand. Again, continue to trend upward there. That's it. Again, snapshot in time. We'll plan to do this hopefully every quarter, just to give you a view of kind of how we're doing, how we're performing, but continue to take a long-term, you know, view and approach, um, in, in, in terms of how we're investing. Um, don't want to get caught up in the, you know, the volatility and the cycles, but, uh, want to, want to continue to see this, uh, grow and help you.
All right. Thanks, Chair. All right. Next up, we have the safe schools update. Uh, let's see, Carl, we're starting with you?
Yeah, well, we're actually going to start with this sign to kind of go over, um, what's going, what's going on at, on a high level. There've been a couple of changes this past month. And then, um, Miss Shipman and I will, uh, tag team the health update when she is finished.
Um, so just a few, few bits of new information and even one that's not on the slide. So the first and one of the more exciting ones is that the FDA and the CDC have gone through their authorization process for kids ages five through twelve, um, which is, um, meaning that they can start be, beginning to get their vaccinations, um, yesterday. So, um, I'm happy to report, we already have a vaccination clinic set up with Miss Shipman and Vax Clinic, which will be on November eighth. Is that correct, Miss Shipman? Um, and so, and then there will be several other ones. So, um, it, it is really convenient for our families to be able to do that. And this clinic in particular, Miss Shipman and Vax Clinic have planned around, um, recognizing that little guys need a little bit more privacy and a little bit different, um, setup. So we even have one of our teachers come in to do balloon animals and some different things to help ease, ease in that. Um, so kudos to, to her and her team thinking forward on that. Um, teaching staff have begun to receive their booster shots. Um, and on October twenty-fifth, uh, the Department of Health and Human Services put out an updated FAQ that no longer recommends that all North Carolina school districts require students and employees wear face masks in schools. Um, it is now based on local transmissions rate. So I want to be clear, that's not like, hey, everybody throw up the mask. What it said was, instead of a broad brush, everybody should be doing this. They said it's going to start to change locally and you as school board should have the flexibility to look at when and if it is the right time to, um, pull back on that mandate. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. And then the last bullet that isn't a bullet, um, that just came out, which is OSHA just came out um, and is now mandating any organization that is a hundred, um, individuals or more, either staff have to be vaccinated or they have to be tested weekly. If you are, um, now I'm happy to report as a school, we started that on October eighteenth. So that has already been happening here at LNC. Um, we're fortunate because we have low numbers of folks that are unvaccinated. And as we've said before, some for very good reasons, um, but they are participating in the, in the testing program. Um, then one surprise that came out of OSHA was that moving forward, unless that changes, OSHA is requiring, um, staff that are unvaccinated, even if this school board votes to get rid of masks, staff that are unvaccinated will be required and mandated to wear masks. And that is not a school thing. That is a OSHA federal thing. So that was a surprise and that came out as part of the new legislation. So, um, we'll look at that a little bit more. Um, the state superintendent, which is Catherine Truitt, came out and as a state is, um, is declaring that a bit of an overreach for schools. So, um, she is, she has vowed to look into that as from the Department of, um, uh, Public Instruction. I'm not sure what that means and I will keep the board updated, but that all is hot off the presses.
Okay, now for, um, kind of what's going on in our local community. The last update for Mecklenburg County was on October twenty-seventh, which was published on October twenty-ninth. Um, all county metrics are representing a decreasing trend over the last fourteen days and over the last really actually two months. Um, new, new daily new COVID cases had a seven-day moving average of a hundred and sixty-three, um, a hundred and seventy-five. I put the fourteen-day average back on there. Um, when we've been looking at this trend over the last two months, um, we've seen some rapid declines, which are great. Um, over the last two weeks, these trends have seemed to stabilize. Um, they are still going down, but just at a much slower pace. So we just kind of want to keep our eye on that to make sure that, you know, they continue in that direction. Um, last month, when we updated you, the daily cases were, were three hundred and fifty-three. So from three hundred and fifty-three to one sixty-three is a, is a nice decline over the last month. Again, over the last two weeks, kind of stabilized, but, um, we'll be keeping an eye on that. Uh, percent positive had a seven-day moving average of seven point one compared to eight point nine the last time we updated. Um, next one. I probably could do it from memory if you asked, but, um, hospitalizations, um, over the last seven days, a hundred and eighty-seven people in our county were hospitalized, um, and that compares to three hundred and thirty-six at our last update. Uh, approximately sixty-one percent of Mecklenburg County is partially vaccinated, fifty-seven percent being fully vaccinated. Um, roughly fifty-eight percent of our twelve to seventeen-year-olds are partially vaccinated. And, um, hoping with the next board report, we'll be actually able to, um, provide vaccination rates for the five to eleven-year-old crowd. Um, for, before I turn it over to Miss Shipman, I just wanted to note for the board, um, the update from the, um, Department of Health and Human Services, the toolkit update in, um, no longer requiring masks. One of the, um, things that, um, Miss Stein noted was that it, um, their recommendations are that we look at, you know, community transmission rates to make our decisions. Those community transmission rates come from the CDC. Uh, the CDC has, um, very clear definitions on what that looks like. They look at the, uh, case rate for one hundred thousand individuals as well as the percent positive. They have, um, varying thresholds. So in, you know, way back when, when we did these updates, um, I think the first couple of times we had a, a graph up there that is now in the appendix, but it kind of had that red, yellow and green. Um, the, the Mecklenburg County has updated those graphics to now include more colors. I think it's like red, orange, yellow, green and maybe blue, I think is the, the new color. Um, those, um, that was done intentionally. It correlates exactly with the, um, thresholds that the CDC recommends. Um, right now, Mecklenburg County, um, is still considered in the red, which is the highest, um, level of spread within the community. And that is largely because of our case rate per one hundred thousand individuals. Um, our percent positivity, I think, falls in the yellow, which is, um, without it in front of me, is the moderate. I think it goes like substantial, um, and then there's orange and then, yeah, and then the yellow is the moderate. So, um, so we are, you know, again, even though it is in the red level, um, it is based on two metrics. So we want to be looking at those in tandem. Um, and, um, if anybody has any questions, I don't know, why don't I just let Miss Shipman kind of go over internally what's been going on and then we can hold questions for, um, either county or internal from the board. So, Miss Shipman?
Sure. So our numbers, as you can see, look very good. Uh, we still have quite a, a, a low number. Um, a little elevated this week from the two weeks prior, but still lower, um, than they have been in the past. And then our local schools. Um, we of course attribute that to the mask wearing. That helps keep our spread down immensely. And so, um, even though the community spread, as you said, is in the red or the yellow, we are still at a place here where we can see that wearing the masks are what keeps our numbers low and helps us to, um, be able to keep our community spread within our, our Lake Norman Charter community here at school much lower. To speak to Ms. Stein, as she said, we will be having the um, vaccination clinic that's going to be happening on November eighth. The Vax Clinic and the Health Department have reached out to us, um, based on the relationships that we've built and asked us to be a vaccination site for them. Um, as they anticipate a large quantity of people who will be looking to vaccinate their five to eleven-year-old children. So we will actually be the vaccination site for the county for the two eight seven, two eight oh seven eight zip code. If you call the hotline and try to find a, a vaccination site, you give them your zip code that you're going to get Lake Norman Charter. So we will have uh, six vaccination clinics every Monday, starting November eighth and ending on December the thirteenth, giving our families and the community families an opportunity to get themselves, if they've not yet vaccinated, and also their students and children, just in time for the holidays, for all that family loved one mingling, in the words of Farley, that will help us to, um, keep our community spread low so that even as we travel and mix with people that we're not normally with, we'll have an opportunity to, uh, be vaccinated and still keep our numbers, keep our numbers low.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions about any of the health? Um, related information before we move on to our recommendation and then kind of talk about what's going on, what's going to happen next?
Yeah, just give us a little bit of clarity. I, I'm trying to make sure I'm following this. So if the rates and the percent positivity falls below the certain thresholds, that local area and then the school board would have the flexibility to change their decision around masks being required versus optional, but it has to be both. If one of them is in the red, we would need to continue to follow that guideline.
Correct. Um, excuse me, correct. Um, so right now, as it is written, um, they're strongly recommending masks regardless of your community transmission rate until the five to eleven crowd can be fully vaccinated. So because those vaccination rates or vaccinations started yesterday, um, that group can essentially be fully vaccinated or, or has the potential to be fully vaccinated by the holiday. So they, um, you know, kind of the subtext of it was, you know, listen, we're going to move to, you know, we're starting to see some of our counties. Unfortunately, a lot of, uh, North Carolina still is in the red, but, um, you know, as these, these transmission rates are dropping and, and these rates are dropping, you know, they're being responsive. Um, you know, to, to that, that kind of opens up some options. So right now, they're still strongly recommending until, you know, the, the younger group can be fully vaccinated that, you know, they, you know, that we continue to mask. So that's one part of it. The second part is yes. Um, with community transmission rates, from what I've seen, um, you do need to have both sets of numbers be in, in acceptable range. Um, and that acceptable range is kind of in that lower, um, community spread. Now, you know, there's other factors. One of the things that this group kind of, you know, has shied away from is thresholds, um, you know, from the very beginning. Um, and you know, we're, we're starting to put, you know, thresholds, uh, the Department And, you know, we're we're starting to put, you know, thresholds, the Department of Health and, I'm sorry, Mecklenburg County kind of started to do that when they published those graphs. Initially, when they did the red, yellow and and green. We, as a group, have really looked at things in total. So say, for example, if one of the metrics has been consistently in the blue or, you know, range, but the other metric is maybe in the yellow. Does that necessarily mean that we won't think about, you know, doing mask optional? No, I mean, I think that, you know, we would look at things kind of more holistically, like what, you know, what's going on with both of those numbers, what's going on internally? You know, there's a lot of resources that we can pull from a group. You know, obviously, we are going to listen to the medical experts. You know, we'll continue to monitor their guidance. But, you know, with everything, you know, they throw out guidance and it's, you know, it's kind of really leave it up to your best discretion. So I'm not going to sit here and say that we're going to have to wait till everything's in the blue before we make that move. That's going to be something that the committee is really going to have to consider. You know, with, you know, kind of what's going on within our four walls, what's going on within our community, how do vaccination rates look? You know, there's a lot of things that can kind of tie into it. So hopefully, that was a very long winded answer, hopefully. Okay, if there are no further questions, you know, given the current data, even though we are encouraged by the numbers, because the five to eleven year olds are just having the ability to be vaccinated and because, you know, technically we are still in the red, we are going to continue masking or recommending mandatory masking for all students and staff and visitors. I will let the board know and we can advance to the next slide that the committee is currently working on getting a meeting on the books. We hope to come to the December meeting with a little bit more of an idea, kind of digesting, because literally this this change to the toolkit happened last week. So the committee really wants time to come together. We're asking Ms. Shipman to join us and really talk through, okay, what does this mean? What does this mean for our school? What, you know, if, like in your example, Jared, like if both numbers do not, you know, fall to the blue, what does that mean? You know, would there be a level that we would feel more comfortable? Is there, you know, nonnegotiables that, you know, it's just not a risk we're willing to take? Like, kind of really massaging all of that. So we're working on that and our hope, we're going to try to have that meeting before the Thanksgiving break. And our hope is to be able to come to the board with a little bit more clarity. Once we've had a an opportunity to come together as a group to discuss, you know, kind of where our heads are at. So that if we decide to make alternate arrangements, that is something that we will be able to give the staff and our families time to react to that.
Thanks for the update. I think definitely the transition plan makes sense. And, you know, hopefully, a lot of our L N C families take advantage of the vaccine clinic. So great announcement, love to see that kind of Johnny on the spot today. So that's awesome. All right, so we do need a vote as a collective board about the recommendation. So I'll open up, see if there's a motion out there.
Yeah, this is Elizabeth, I'll move to support continued masking at present.
This is Nicole, I second.
Thank you, ladies. Any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have G D and I update. I know Ms. Chapman could not be here today, so Ms. Stein, I believe, is going to provide an update.
Ms. Stein and Mr. Funchess are tag teaming again. So if, in case I miss anything, he'll he'll jump in. So for November, we had a good meeting. We just met earlier this week and around our three goals. So just as an update, Nixon and Company is the outside consulting group that we brought in to work with our teachers. And remember, all of our teachers have gone through at least one diversity training in house that was designed by G D and I and most specifically and hosted by Mary Ann Rogowski, who does an excellent job. Always lots of great feedback about how interactive, deep and applicable her workshops are. Nixon and Company is to bring in another perspective, and they're the ones that are also going to do an assessment of our staff after a second workshop. So the first workshop went well, and they're going to be coming in next, in the next two weeks. They'll do high school and elementary next week. And then after that, the next week after that will be the middle school. And just talking about diversity, what they're, what we're seeing here in school and having a little bit more large group discussion amongst our staff. For goal number two, the high school microaggression training will be completed before the holiday break. We had a mini pause in that because the original instructional design relied on the staff to have to facilitate that. And our staff gave some really good valuable feedback that they needed a little bit more guidance because they hadn't been officially trained. And we want that to be something that's taken seriously and that they feel good about. And so there was a little bit of a pause to provide more resources and more of a plug and play design. So Module Two is done, and I think Mr. Funchess will be getting that out to staff here either by tomorrow or early next week so that they can start reviewing that and see if they have any questions. At the middle school, drop everything and talk. This is Native American Heritage Week, that again is part, they're doing that as part of nighttime, and that continues to go well, where there's guided discussion around different cultural background months. And at the elementary, they're continuing to examine their diversity practices throughout the curriculum. And some examples are pulling elements from different cultures for resources and books. Our specials have created travel passports where they're going to be highlighting different countries inside the specials. And then we're seeing a really concerted effort by our staff to use more diverse names and examples in math problems. And there's several other things, these are just examples that the representative, which is Ms. Callie Bloom, gave to the G D and I group. And then for goal three, probably we spent the most time talking about goal three. While we feel like we have a very good G D and I mission statement, it really focuses a lot in on on recognizing and respecting other cultures. And while that is one important aspect of what we do, we feel like this committee and our school continues to evolve, and we need to be a little bit more deeper in what our mission statement is. So Ridgely brought some examples of some really good exemplar statements. The team started to look at those, and then they're going to come back to that at the next meeting. We're finalizing an infographic that will go out to all of our parents, because one of the goals of the group was to better engage our parents in understanding the work that the committee is doing, sort of to de-stigmatize. I'm sure some of you've seen on the news, there's a lot of vitriol sometimes around things with global diversity and inclusion. And that's why, beginning of the year, we spoke about it, and we're going to continue to involve our parents so that they understand what the goal of the committee is and what is not the goal of the committee, which is just as important. And that infographic, we were hoping to get this out a little sooner, but we felt like it made sense to wait till the mission statement is done so that it could kind of go part and parcel. And then lastly, we discussed as a group, what is our responsibility as a school and a response when student activities happen outside of school that may be insensitive towards other students groups and may have a G D and I twist, including on social media? Because sometimes things happen outside of school and, you know, to really understand what our purvey is. So we had some really good discussion around that. Mr. Funchess, did I miss anything that you felt was important?
Got it all.
Okay, and that was it.
All right.
You sure can.
What what conclusions did we draw about that outside?
So one of the conclusions, yeah, that's a great question. And when things have happened in the past, if they are related directly, two things have to happen, or one of two things has to happen. It either has to be on a school device and it has to be proven to be on a school device if somebody's doing something that's insensitive. Or it has to be something that severely disrupts the school environment. In other words, we're going to come to school and we're going to do X, Y and Z, and it causes that we can't run school, as an example. And we, when these things have come up, we always lean into our legal counsel. And because, you know, sometimes that's the hard thing, you have a heart head issue. We can get very upset about some of the things that folks do, but we do have a limited scope as a school. And so what what that group discussed is that oftentimes what we're left with is if we can't act, we feel like it's important that we're responsive to students' concerns, see, you know, give them an opportunity to listen and to have dialogue. I know the counseling staff and the administration at the high school, in one of the more recent things that happened, had quite a bit of dialogue around students' perceptions, perceptions of school, and help us to then frame what we're doing moving forward. And then we're going to have to take an educational approach. So, you know, sometimes that can be the frustrating part for families and for our students is that, you know, we as a school, just because every kid goes here, if it's not directly related to school, we can't necessarily have consequence for all of that. And that can be sometimes hard to take because we are a community and we say we're a community. And our hope is, is that with continued work all the way through, we will see less and less of those things. But people do silly things. And so when those things happen, we address them to the best of our ability. So that was the discussion that was had around that. Anything else, Mr. Funchess? No.
Going on? No, all right. Thank you, Ms. Stein and Mr. Funchess. Next up, the Thrive Committee.
Okay, we had a big month, I feel like, especially with our Day of Service, which we'll get to in a minute. But to kind of go over, so for goal number one, which is our collegiate and K through twelve kind of research, we hosted a college panel just before this board meeting. And we had, oh, gosh, I'm going to have to do this from memory. Five or six schools, it was Chapel Hill, N C State, Elon, Garner Webb, U N C W, and App State. Join us for a Q and A session to kind of talk about, you know, the changes going on in higher education admissions, student qualifications, innovative strategies that collegiate schools are seeing in secondary schools, and kind of had a nice chat over what sets the L N C student apart. And it was really nice to see several of those colleges went back over the last couple of years to some of our, you know, actual L N C data, and were able to bring some really meaningful talking points to that discussion. This is, you know, a another data point. We've been doing quite a few things. We did the alumni panel, we've done the collegiate panel. We're working on a survey, we've started a draft kind of survey to students. And whether or not that actually gets rolled out is still being discussed in committee. But essentially, we're working on all these data points to kind of really start to get a picture and hopefully get a better idea of a good direction that we want to take this piece to kind of start to formulate some long term goals. So over the next couple of weeks, Jen and Ms. Cassius did a wonderful job with our panel today, be summarizing kind of, you know, what what we learned from that and, you know, where we can kind of take some of these things moving forward. Goal number two is our is our Leadership in Action Program. The Leadership in Action Program was officially kicked off on the nineteenth of October during nighttime. Ms. Cassius, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Caviciat, sorry, I knew I was going to intermix those two. Ms. Caviciat and her team did a wonderful job on creating a presentation that the students viewed during that time, kind of explaining what the Leadership in Action Program was, the pillar that we are focusing on this year, and kind of a really nice kickoff to that. As part of this draft survey that I spoke about with the goal number one, is there is a section on there to kind of get some student insight into our Leadership in Action Program. So as we kind of work through this survey and, you know, determine, you know, if we want to utilize it and what pieces we'd like to utilize, this was one of the things that we thought might be important to get some feedback from our students. And for goal number three, we had our Day of Service, our the second Day of Service we had. It was like this past Friday. I had the pleasure to spend the the day at L N C with the students, the staff and our parent volunteers. And it just was an amazing day. Sarah Lay, Ms. Lay, Ms. Negrete, and Ms. Caviciat did an amazing job planning for this day. It was a lot. I think I got a twelve page schedule with every nuance of every possible thing that could happen and a contingency plan for it. You can tell that they put a lot of time and effort and thought into it to making sure that it ran smoothly. I was blown away by the parent volunteers, so thank you to all of our parents that were able to join. It was, I I think, outside of serving lunches, it was probably one of the first opportunities that we've had as a parent group to kind of come back into the school and reengage since COVID started. And I couldn't think of a better way to do it. So we appreciate that. Thank you to all of our students. Ms. Stein, I know, has shared, at least with me and in some of the coffee chats, I attended the coffee chat, the high school coffee chat on Tuesday, where she shared some just kind of, you know, little stories of some things that she overheard, just the students coming together, all grade levels, some of our older students really taking our younger students under their wings. I personally witnessed, I think, one of the pictures, I didn't, I probably didn't include it, but some of the younger students actually sat on the laps of some of our older students as they were writing notes. It was very cute. And, you know, thank you to all our staff and administration for, you know, putting this all together. It was a great day. So are we going to share the video or? Yeah, we, I know we posted it on social media, but why not? So it's it's worth.
I might be, we'll, we'll see if it pops up. If it does, this would be the.
And before we do that, I just also, you know, ninety five percent of 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 that day was, you know, this Day of Service. But I also want to recognize that we had quite a few students individually and in groups elect to take their service time off campus, which was amazing. I know our Student Council went to the town of Huntersville, the Parks and Recreation, and helped clean up. We have a great partnership with, you know, the that department. And so it was nice to see our students go serve. So thank you to all of our students who, you know, through whatever reason, their their individual passions, took their service on their own that day. And we recognize that as well.
So it looks like we have technical difficulties. So if you'd like to see the video, go to social media and it hopefully will play better there.
Yes.
All right, thank you for the Thrive update. I'll just echo the Day of Service phenomenal day, great to see everybody out there, lots of volunteers. Incredible logistical challenge getting that many kids here, everywhere.
Yeah, I don't know how she did it. At one point, I was thinking of something and I went to the twelve page schedule and I was like, oh, there it is, right there. She's thought of it already. So, I mean, I can't even imagine logistics of that, and they did an incredible job, so.
Yeah, it it was, so I had the opportunity to volunteer, and I know several board members did as well, and it was just phenomenal. I mean, the the kids were eating it up, they were having a great time. I don't know, it's just, aside from the mask, it was some sort of normalcy for them, which was awesome. And probably my favorite part was when they did like the the part in the assembly where they're kind of explaining the story. And they're like, how many of us were, or how many of you were with us two years ago when we did this? And like every kindergartner raised their head. I don't think you were a part of it two years ago. So Leslie and I got to chuckle out at that while we saw the heads go up. So, anyway, great job. Thank you to to everybody that was involved in it, to the entire L N C community. Awesome. All right, next up, we have the Dress Code Policy Revision. All right. Next up, we have the dress code policy revision that I believe Ms. Fogarty is going to provide an update for.
Yes, thank you. Well, credit goes to Greg Kilpatrick, who is leading the charge on the dress code policy revision work. So I'm here to provide a verbal update in his absence tonight. So the committee, which is comprised of representation across all three schools, met again in October and continues to make progress on evaluating the correct policy, researching best practices and identifying opportunities to modify and clarify the purpose and the requirements of the dress code. And that also includes looking at how dress code is enforced. So based on the progress to date, the committee is still targeting a draft of the proposed policy and changes that would go out to the broader LNC community and stakeholders for feedback prior to end of this calendar year. So that'll go out to teachers, to parents and to students to provide feedback on on the proposed changes. And the intent is still to implement or to for the board to review and decision on that proposed policy change early in the new year for an implementation in in early twenty twenty two. So thank you to the staff members who are giving your time and energy to participate in that committee. And thanks to our LNC community for your patience as this group really spends the time and have has good dialogue to get to a good outcome.
Okay, thank you for the update, Ms. Fogarty. All right. With that, we are through our agenda. Sorry, motion to adjourn.
This is Amy. I motion to adjourn the meeting.
This is Nicole. I second.
I think Nicole can get off mute fast enough. All right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.